Good morning. I will now call to order the April 27, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Schmidt, please take the role.
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Clerk to the Board, Tony Maranick; Assistant County Counsel, Kathleen Rastetter; Commissioner Savis is out of the office today. Role call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind our participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, would you introduce the first item, please?
Yes, we are moving right to the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Elected Officials. Item One: Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Finance. Item One: Approval of a Contract with Moss Adams LLP for Annual Financial Audit Services. Total Contract Value is $2,011,000 for five years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. County Counsel. Item One: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas County Vector Control District for Legal and Procurement Services. Agreement Value is $10,000. Term is through June 30, 2028. Funding through Vector Control. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development. Item One: Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Jacobs Engineering for the Sunrise Gateway Corridor Community Visioning Project. Total Value is $3,262,229 until December 31, 2024. Funding through state operating grants. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Commissioner West has moved to approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded it. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Gary, what's next?
Chair, would you please convene as the Development Agency Board of Directors?
I will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors.
You are now meeting as a development agency. This is the consent agenda for the development agency. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
One item: Approval of Utility Easement to Portland General Electric in order to provide needed infrastructure across development agency property. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved.
Does any Commissioner wish to pull the item?
No.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. I will now adjourn as a development agency and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Did I do something wrong?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
You are flying through this meeting, Commissioners. Next is public communication.
That's why you're smiling like a Cheshire Cat over there.
Is this the record?
Yeah.
It might be the record, yeah.
Well, up next is public communication. From that big crowd I see out there, this portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of our consideration and should not be nonpartisan and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be courteous and respectful to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will accept people in the audience here first. Anybody wanting to testify can fill out a blue card. Up first, Tess Fields. Please come forward. State your name and your area of residence.
Good morning. Is this on? Yeah. My name is Tess Fields. I'm the Executive Director of Homshare Oregon, and I reside in Multnomah County.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I appreciate your service to Oregon and also Clackamas County, and I appreciate the invitation to be able to share with all of you a little bit of the work that we're doing in Homshare, at Homshare Oregon, to expand access to affordable housing in Clackamas County. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that launched about 1.5 years ago, focused on the affordable housing crisis, and trying to come up with innovative solutions to expand access to housing, in addition to all of the other responses, frankly, that the state and counties and cities are attempting to do, and kind of asked ourselves, you know, what's not being done? What else could we be doing? And came across the home share program model that's running in several other cities across the country. We quickly established a private-public partnership with a for-profit company called Silvernest, and set up compatibility matching for homeowners and housemates. We raised dollars to make sure that the technology was available to all Oregonians for free. Then we partnered with Tonkin Torp and some other attorneys to come up with templates for rental and lease agreements. And then we put together an aggressive public education campaign, partnering with the Oregon Broadcasters Association, and launched several television commercials about the benefits of home sharing. There's 1.5 million owner-occupied homes across the state of Oregon with a spare bedroom available, one out of every three homeowners are mortgage-burdened, and senior citizens particularly are the fastest-growing population of homeless people across the state of Oregon for many different reasons. We felt if we could match these constituencies, then we could kill two birds with one stone. We could increase access to affordable housing for people who need it, and then we could also help build financial resiliency for homeowners that are at risk of losing their homes or are so severely mortgage-burdened that they're having a difficult time making ends meet in other ways. We were met with a little bit of skepticism. Home sharing was a fairly ubiquitous practice prior to World War II. It fell out of favor in 70s, 80s, and 90s, and now we're kind of looking at bringing that back. And I'm pleased to share that once our public education campaign launched, we were really surprised and excited that we had thousands and thousands of Oregonians all across the state looking to bring our services to their counties. I've worked in the nonprofit sector for the majority of my life, and I like to say it's the first time that within two weeks, I think I heard from 33 out of 36 counties. The impetus for people reaching out varied. We had Providence Hospital.
Go ahead.
We had Providence Hospital from the coast reach out, ask us to get over in their community, and galvanize homeowners to rent to their employees. They were having a hard time staffing people because there was no place for employees to live once they got there. We heard from many, many, many senior citizens who had been really wanting to home-share but were concerned about doing it independently and on their own and wanted assistance. And we heard, obviously, from thousands of Oregonians that were looking for an affordable place to live. The average rent in a home-sharing arrangement is about $750 a month, and the opportunity to create all kinds of different diverse and varied rental and lease agreements is something that's just not available anymore in the traditional rental market. So we have reduced rent for swapped work, specifically with seniors, and so on and so forth. At this point in time, I'm really excited to share that we have had 975 homeowners sign up to rent spare bedrooms. And as we got more and more into this, what we were able to recognize is that spare bedrooms are actually underutilized housing stock. And how do we incentivize homeowners to put that housing stock to work to benefit, you know, our state, our communities, as well as themselves? And so in our view, with 975 homeowners that have signed up to rent a spare bedroom, that reduces the need for 975 apartments, or it keeps 975 apartments available for somebody else who might need them. So it's kind of a trickle-down approach. Home sharing's not for everyone, obviously, but our goal is for everyone who is conducive to home sharing. This becomes almost a preferred lifestyle as opposed to taking up an apartment or a hotel room or whatever it is. So we really see this as expansion. I'm here today because we've had intensive demand come from Clackamas County to get someone on the ground over here for our services and to match folks. We've had over 100 homeowners in Clackamas County reach out to us and ask us to provide them with more direct services in terms of renting a spare bedroom, what that looks like, what it entails, et cetera. We received funding from Multnomah County at $250,000, and we were able to hire an area representative and put them on the ground to not only provide public affairs and outreach for the home-sharing model and answer people's general questions, but also to provide direct case management services specifically to women over the age of 65 who were really interested in home sharing. And we've been able to make these really fantastic, successful matches, and we'd like to emulate that here. In addition to that, I wanted to share that our organization also has an advocacy arm. We did drop legislation this session, House Bill 3032. It's a very minor adjustment in income tax law to incentivize people to home-share. As you guys probably know as well as I do, to build a single unit of housing, whether it's an apartment or a house, it averages $450,000 per door. So even if the governor's budget at $880 million, which has been suggested to address the homelessness and housing crisis, even if all of that money, all that revenue was completely directed to production, it would still only glean about 2,517 units of housing, which is not even close to what we need. We're behind 111,000 units of housing across the state of Oregon at all economic income levels. So this is no longer just a low-income problem. This is we're seeing people fall into homelessness that are middle-class, that are, you know, seniors specifically, which I have a lot to say on that issue for another day, but it's a crime what's happening to our seniors in terms of housing, have worked all their lives, paid their taxes, and now they're in situations where they're losing their homes or they're being evicted from apartments, and they're 75 years old, they're at the end of their lives, they can't just go out and get another job, and they're ending up on the streets after living really productive, fantastic, wonderful lives and benefiting everyone. So I have a lot of information. I know I have three minutes, and I'm already over that.
I'm way over three minutes, but I would like, you did very, very well, and I think Commissioners have questions we'd like to ask you if you don't mind.
Yes.
Okay, you have submitted this profit and loss statement, the numbers here. What is this for?
So I wanted to provide you all with an example of what, how we constructed a budget for Multnomah County. So it's a draft of kind of what we did and what the dollars went to. Once we got someone on the ground in Multnomah County, participation in Home Share Oregon went up by 32%, and this person's only been on the ground for six months. So we're pretty excited.
Okay. All right. And what is the status of the House bill you referenced, 3032?
I'm excited to share that it passed out of the Housing and Homelessness Committee. It also received.
In the House or the Senate?
On the House side. On the Senate side, I'm really excited to share that Senator Tim Canop has championed this bill and made it a priority bill for this session. In addition to that, Senator Rob Wagner, who's the Senate President, has also championed this bill and is making it a priority for this session. On the House side, it's sitting in the J-Tax Committee, which is chaired by Senator Meek and Representative Nathanson, and we are aggressively lobbying right now to get a hearing on our bill. I also want to share that just this morning, I encourage all of you to pick up a USA Today. I wanted to get you all copies, but we've been featured on the front page in the Money section as a way to address the crisis in affordable housing across the country and how this program specifically is working for seniors, and what we want to do is incentivize people to do it more.
Yeah, we get that.
Okay.
Also, is there any other companion bills like this in the legislature?
The Senate did drop a companion bill. They became really enthusiastic, but it's the exact identical bill as the House bill, and so we allowed the Senate bill to go ahead and die and pursue it in the House because it had already been assigned to J-Tax.
So is there any funding that goes with the bill?
No, we don't have a funding request in yet, but the state of Oregon did fund us at the $500,000 level, starting two years ago, to run a pilot down in Josephine and Jackson Counties to match fire survivors who had lost their homes with homeowners who had spare bedrooms. And we're really excited to share that over 100 people have matched as a result of that in the southern part of the state. But what we really learned through that program, Chair, is just the incredible demand for this service in all areas of the state. So we're continuing to have conversations with the state about funding.
That's fine. I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, it's good. I'm glad.
You're doing well. I mean, this is really a great program. I think we're all enthusiastic about it. We don't disagree with really anything you said, especially when you talk about the elderly population. You may be too young to know, but you remember the term, the nuclear family?
Yes.
Okay, that one, three generations or maybe four generations would live in the same house, and the elderly people would not be on their own or possibly in a situation of losing their homes. And so I'm a little bit older than, I remember that. So in Clackamas County, I believe, Gary, this concept is already legal, and I'm not sure what your bill intends to do.
Well, our bill actually, it's a statewide bill, and what it does is it makes a minor, minor adjustment in Oregon income tax law. So what it states is if you're a homeowner living in an owner-occupied home and you're willing to rent a spare bedroom for $1,000 or less per month, which is almost half-market rate, then you're absolved from having to pay the additional income tax on the additional earned income. So for instance, if you're at the 9% income tax rate and you bill $1,000 a month, which sidebar, nobody is that's involved in there, they're way below the 9% tax rate. But anyway, just to make the math easy, that homeowner would owe the state at the end of the year about $1,050. But what the state is getting in return is somebody housed for a year for less than $1,000 a month, which is absolutely impossible, even in low-income housing, you can't even find low.
Oh, I know. Yes, definitely.
So we feel really strongly that homeowners should get a break who are willing to bring strangers into their homes and provide housing for people in the same way that we provide tax credits to housing developers and others to build affordable housing. We want to encourage the community to become a part of the solution to the problem, and we feel like this bill is just a small, small thing that we can do to get people there.
Okay, we have two other Commissioners who would like to speak on this. Commissioner West.
So Tess, we just met. We had a meeting last week, and I just can't help but notice that there's some providence with you coming right now at this time as we are addressing this issue. The staff knows, Gary knows, I've met with the Chair now. I've talked to you about our innovative policy idea that really focuses on home sharing, right? That is unique to get, I call it the reconfiguration of square footage. Basically, the idea is that the county would help people get their homes ready for home sharing.
And we love that.
Yeah, and so we were just like, we were just the synergy, we were, I mean, the ideas. It is innovative, more affordable, it is using what we have on hand. I think it gets people on the bubble of homelessness housed quickly, higher barrier people quickly and rapidly. I can't also help but notice that this is such a great, in many ways, an alternative to, I think, what the Quality Inn would end up being. And let me explain why. The Quality Inn, if we would have bought it, would have had to be very, very high barrier. And it would have ended up probably mostly because of the issues around the type of population that that community would have been able to handle there, pretty high barrier people at the end of the day. And so one thing about the hotel model that's tough is you have a single mom in Wilsonville on one side of the county, uprooting and being relocated to a hotel on the other side of the county. It is so much more dignifying to keep people in the communities they already call home, to have housings, to utilize the housing stock already built there, and allowing them to live in an actual home. And then you're creating community within the home with other people, relationships are formed, you almost get this extent of extended family. In some ways, it models a really successful program called Bridge Meadows, that's in North Portland. I don't know if you've heard of it. What they do is they create an intentional community, built purposefully. Parents and individuals that want to adopt a foster child, adopt a foster child, they live in an appropriate family-sized condo onsite. They also have affordable senior living. They act as helpful childcare and tutors for the kids in the system. They have onsite services, and it's this little, beautiful, purposely-built community that supports families, supports seniors, and they're all working in the same direction. In a lesser sense, I can see how this fits that same way that we honor people's dignity and we give them a safe and respectable place to be while connecting people to more people where they live. And to me, that is the most powerful lens in how we address a lot of the housing issues, is how do we allow people to be tethered in a meaningful way that's not burdensome in the communities they call home? I think that there is potentially, we can't get a housing stock up fast enough. It takes years, and then the amount of money we're spending is woefully inadequate to actually ever deal with it. So we're going to spend gobs of money to get a fraction of what we need, and it's going to take a long time to get it up. But this is so brilliant and innovative and giving people that smart incentive on their income tax. I think the House bill's great. I think that you're, from what I've learned, I get super excited by this. I think that we could potentially house more people than we ever could in a hotel that are on the bubble, and I think it's way more dignified. I hope somehow, as we ferret this out, that our Board will partner with you, maybe with our innovative policy solution. I'm so excited. And with your organization, you guys have done a lot of the great work. And you guys also, Commissioner Schrader might allude to this, so I won't steal her thunder, but the hotel program originally was to do what you guys did originally with your pilot program with people that were displaced. This is just so much more dignified. It's so much better.
I think, you know, our founder, I want to give kudos to him, is Homer Williams, who is a brilliant man, some of you may know, responsible for developing the Pearl District. And, you know, what he consistently states, and I think we all agree, is we can't build our way out of this problem. We don't have enough land, we don't have enough money. It doesn't mean we don't lead with production. We have to lead with housing production. But if we think that that's the only thing that we can do, we can't. And so from Home Share Oregon's perspective, we really are enthusiastic about putting what we consider to be underutilized housing inventory to work. And as we start to educate community members and talk to community members and explain to them how you can do this securely, intelligently, decisively, to have a successful experience, what we're finding is people are very enthusiastic about helping themselves. You know, they want to move somebody into their house, they want to be able to afford to age in place, they want to be able to pay their healthcare bills and their prescription drug bills. They don't want to be unhoused. They want to be able to keep their home to pass on to their children, so that, you know, so they can have intergenerational wealth. So I'm so excited. I also want to just, for the benefit of the committee, share with you that, you know, the calls that we get from some folks, specifically, you know, 50 and older women, they're really interested in home sharing, they need maybe, maybe just even $5,000 worth of whatever to get their house ready. They want another door put in so that, you know, the person can have a separate entrance. I had one woman call me that lived in a trailer, lovely, lovely woman. She was 73, she needed a housemate, but her previous housemate had a cat that had ruined the carpet in the spare bedroom. All she needed was a few thousand dollars to replace that carpet, and she didn't have it.
Let me interject on that super quick. So in the email I sent to all of you yesterday on my four crazy ideas, number two on that marries to that exact issue on getting that square footage ready, and then Home Share pops up as potentially an amazing partner. So please look at that, and I look forward to the Board hopefully having the opportunity to have a policy discussion around this policy issue that might marry well with what you're doing. But I'm super excited by it, and thank you for coming in today.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, thanks for this. As someone who's had multiple occasions, my neighbors at one point were saying, well, who's living with you now, Martha? You know, usually it was millennials who needed a hand up and a couple of friends of, you know, close friends whose kids needed, you know, a temporary space to stay, and it was always wonderful. I had one young woman who is still a close, one of my daughter's best friends, and her son had spinal muscular atrophy, which is a terminal disease, and he did pass away. But she was going to be out on the street, and I remember she called my daughter in tears, and my daughter just said, oh, just talk to my mother, she'll take care of everything. And it was probably one of the most wonderful experiences I've had because I was able to help this little boy. And Tudy, you were here when all that was ongoing. I remember with you and John Ludlow at the time, and we had to have nurses in and out and all kinds of things. So, yeah. And I had my older son live with me for a while, too. He just needed to get his feet under himself and do that. So my question, though, is not just my experiences with whatever we've been doing, how do accessory dwelling units fit into this model? And are there incentives for people to do something of that sort?
Well, not, yeah, not at this point. And I'm thinking, I'm sorry, I have my legislative hat on and my bill hat on.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, accessory dwelling units right now are defined, it's almost like a separate place. It's not home sharing. You know, we would like to get to a point eventually where, you know, some of the expectations around that definition are maybe a little bit more flexible because what we find is that, you know, once people dig into the weeds, they can't afford to build an ADU. Or, you know, anyway, lots of different reasons. The short answer is no, ADUs don't fit into this, but it's definitely something that we're excited to explore moving forward.
That helps answer my question, and thank you for the work you do, and it's very intriguing. And of course, Ben will take this idea and run with it.
Yes, I feel very blessed to have had the, we couldn't talk at each other fast enough. And thank you for being a home sharer. I am as well. My last two tenants were Ukrainian refugees, and they were so fantastic that I told my friends that I was going to hide their papers when they came so that they could never leave my house. And then prior to that, I had a college student who lost her student housing. I mean, you know, there's so many fantastic people out there. They can afford $700 a month, or 500, or 800, they can't afford 1,800.
Right.
I mean, it's not.
Market rate right now on apartments is horrific.
And then if you honestly, if you guys, you know, I know you know this, but you look at first, last, security deposit, and then you literally, you know, credit check, background check, job reference. I mean, when my Ukrainians came, I was like, bedrooms upstairs.
Thank you. We have another Commissioner.
Yeah, sorry.
Commissioner Scholl, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Tess, and thank you for coming. I like the Home Share Oregon idea. I like it because it doesn't require tax dollars to keep people housed. It also helps those people who might be getting up in age who still have a mortgage after they've retired and their income is down and it's difficult to stay in their home. So this would help them as well. Like, as Ben mentioned before, we have the accessory dwelling units helping out, we have middle housing trying to help out with our housing shortage, we have the hopes of land use reform that will enable the county to open up new lands to build market-rate homes. So this is another potential benefit to the people, to keep them housed in. to build market rate homes. So this is another potential benefit to the people, to keep them housed in this county. We are currently in budget crunch for the 23-24 budget. So the, looking at anything, anything at all right now that would require some funds is going to be difficult, but I can, I would hope that we can do something in the future to help Home Share Oregon operate, to help the people in this county stay housed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tess, for coming forward. I see no other comments. We appreciate you sharing the information.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.
You bet. Bye-bye. Up next, Les Poole.
Well, good morning, Commissioners and staff. I talk to a lot of folks. I'm Les Poole. I live in a county. And when I say I talk to a lot of folks, I talk to a lot of folks. Business owners, homeowners. My work and my life has exposed me to a lot, and I've been in Clackamas County for 31 years. So I come to you with messages, and they're not messages from me always. They're messages that I'm seeing and hearing and witnessing, I should say, out in the community. And a very timely discussion today, and I appreciate the response to that. And Commissioner West, you know, welcome aboard. I think you're bringing just a good, solid approach to problems that sometimes the county, and I say this with all due respect, but the county tends to react and/or maybe go along with something like Project Turnkey that really wasn't that good of a fit. In fact, it was a poor fit, and in spite of the potential benefits, I think the detriments and the cost were prohibitive. I was going to mention that we're in the budget season, and that's why last week I asked about the cost for the courthouse. I'm not opposed to the courthouse, but it's $15 million a year for 30 years. That's a lot of money. And when I'm speaking with folks in the community and business owners, they're really concerned about the cost, not only for having employees, but the real estate costs are pinching commercial people as well. There's a lot of commercial real estate out there, so there isn't the same shortage we have with housing. But yet, if you're a business owner, your lease, your costs are going up and up and up. And one thing that's clear from this last couple of years of things that have gone on, I'll just say in general, is that the cost for folks to live, to barely exist, has gone through the roof. And I'm pleased to see that, I just get a feeling that the county is looking at, how do we address Metro? There's an elephant in the room. We just heard about a housing shortage, a land shortage, super high costs. And underneath, underneath that message is Metro, who is making it more and more unlivable here and more and more unaffordable. By the way, they're madly in love with the tolling scheme, of course. And so you have Metro, who in one way has put out a bond measures, they're providing money for affordable housing, for homelessness, and at the same time, they're doing things that are making those problems worse, and that's very, very clear. So I, I'm pleased that we're looking at the budget and how we're going to get through it. And I'm hopeful that the public and folks in general continue to get the information about what you folks are doing. One of the reasons Project Turnkey flopped was people found out after the fact instead of upfront. And I think you're being much more proactive and if I, much more, I'll wrap up, but can I use the word approachable or open to ideas? Because if Commissioner Savis was here, he would say, the one thing we don't want to do is follow Portland's failure. So thank you as always. And please, folks, go to Clackamas Live, sign the petition to require a vote on the tolling scheme.
How is that going, by the way?
It's going well. It could be doing better, but the reason we're not really out the door yet is there's so much focus on the legislature. And if you've ever been involved with a statewide petition, when spring comes and the weather comes and folks get out, you start to really rock and roll. We have until July of 2024 to collect all the signatures. Any statewide petition or initiative has to have the signatures turned in 120 days before the election, and any statewide initiative vote has to occur in a November election. So to wrap up, in November of 2024, if this is on the ballot, I believe the voters will pass it, and it would require a public vote before ODOT starts charging us to use existing roads, charging more when traffic is heavy, and then investing the money, the state would invest the money kind of wherever they want. And, boy, that's a recipe for trouble. Hey, thanks again.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to testify? I see two ladies in the back. Would you like to come forward? Nope? Okay, and there's, okay, thank you. Tony, is there anyone online?
Online, I have Mr. Bill Weir. Mr. Weir, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners, Bill Weir-Damaschus. I'd like to comment on yesterday's budget meeting. This concerns the COLA discussion. As with so many policy decisions, by the time it reaches the commission and committee, it's already set, then confirmed by the usual dependables on the commission. The union and unelected functionaries have the power to settle the COLA at 4.5 with no input by a representative of the very taxpayers that are putting the increase in pay. One could say, what about the citizen volunteers at the budget committee? But the budget is presented by the administrator with its recommendation based on data presented within it. I may have missed it, but have the union reps testified in open meetings on what was the original high COLA ask rationale and why it was needed? Was there any individual representing the private sector at the negotiating table? Countless private sector taxpayers of this county are living, seeing their hopes and their quality of life being shattered on a daily basis. One commissioner yesterday in the meeting said that if the 4.5 weren't approved, a lesser amount would cause future disruption in budgeting for the county. I would like to submit that taxpayers are already in a state of household financial disruption today, just making ends meet, and their future already disrupted. By assuming a high-end COLA floor at the beginning of the budget process institutionalizes it, no matter what the availability of the taxpayer, to sustain it over time. Another comment by the same commissioner was the idea that elected officials are public servants and could serve without pay. Well, that may very well work if one were independently wealthy and/or backed by powerful special interests. It would certainly keep the working class undesirables out. Actually, the current chair of the budget committee at the opening of a budget meeting two years ago proposed eliminating commissioner's salary, but it was limited to removing the salary of only one undesirable commissioner. Thank you.
Gary, have a comment?
The salaries for elected officials, that's a state requirement, that there's a compensation board made up of volunteer members of the community who make a recommendation to the budget committee, and then you accept or reject that recommendation. So any elected official's salary by state law has to go through an advisory board, a compensation board of volunteers in the community who then advise you. For employee salaries, that's an entirely different scenario. There's collective bargaining agreements for the representative employees, where that was negotiated, the cost of living, non-representative management employees. That's in the county code, that they will receive what the representative employees make. So that's a whole different scenario. But for the elected officials, that's a state process we follow. And any member of the public may comment during the public budget committee week. There'll be a public testimony, and the members of the public can express their agreement or disagreement with salaries.
And I believe that's Tuesday night during our budget deliberations, and we moved that up a day. So if anybody out there watching that would have an opportunity to come and testify before we have a final approval on the budget, correct?
Correct, yes.
And budget week is the week of May 22nd.
Correct, yes.
I had to remember that. So on the Tuesday of that week, folks can come in and testify.
It'll be Tuesday, May 23rd in the evening. We've not published the budget calendar yet, but Commissioners, you're aware this is coming.
So we are listening to people. There will be opportunity for public testimony, and anybody can come to this business meeting as well. Tony, is there anyone else?
Madam Chair, that is the end of my list.
Oh, great. I went through that pretty fast. Gary, what's next?
Next is county administrator update. That's me. I like to share good news of the work of our employees and our programs. I'll start today with our Health Housing Human Services Department, Children, Family and Community Connections Division, and our Early Learning Hub Director, Dani Stam-Thomas. She's been selected to receive a Zero to Three Fellowship, participate in a fellowship program called Zero to Three. What is that? Zero to Three is a national nonprofit dedicating to ensuring all babies and toddlers have a strong start in life. The organization's fellowship program helps leaders transform programs, systems, policies that influence how early childhood professionals engage with their work. The Early Learning Hub of Clackamas County increases access to quality childcare in preschools and improves early learning programs overall within the county. For the last 12 years, Dani has worked here at Clackamas County with children from infancy up to 13 years old in various childcare and early learning settings. Congratulations, Dani, for your selection in this competitive fellowship program, Zero to Three, that will benefit our county and our residents. Next, Clackamas Water Environment Services, sanitary and stormwater technician Bob Skinner, recently represented West Water Environment Services in the rodeo competition. Now, this is R-O-A-D, road, E-O, competition, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. What this is, is people, employees that operate heavy equipment machinery compete in an obstacle course designed to test skills for smooth operation, dexterity, and problem solving. So Bob placed second in the state competition, and now he goes to the national competition in San Diego, paid for by the association, not the county, to compete in this contest. So this is really cool. So congratulations, Bob, coming in second place in Oregon for the rodeo competition, and he now goes to nationals. We'll keep you posted. That's my report. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Up next is Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. At 10:43, this is a record-fast meeting. Another reminder, you heard from Mr. Poole this morning on tolling. We have until July of 2024 to collect all those petitions, the IP4, to put tolling before the voters in November of 2024. But please do not wait till next year to sign a petition, to circulate it in your neighborhood, and get it turned in. The fact is, for some people in Clackamas County, should tolling happen on I-205, it will become your third highest tax after federal and state income taxes. $2,000-plus dollars a month for one car if you commute Monday through Friday on I-205. Fight tolling now while you can. Okay, on the Portland Water Bureau filtration plant, the project that they envisioned to be built on 100 acres just across the county line in Multnomah County on exclusive farm use land, the Portland Water Bureau and their idea for a $1.5 billion plant in a pristine rural countryside is getting a lot of pushback from the COTREL CPO and the Pleasant Home Community Association on the Multnomah County side of the line. They're fighting this project to preserve their homes and their farms, and they have put together a COTREL CPO 501-3C to collect donations for their legal costs to fight the bureaucracy at the Portland Water Bureau. Please help them out at www.cotrelcpo.com. Make a tax deductible contribution. If they prevail and stop this plant, they will not only be helping the people of the Pleasant Home Community Association and the COTREL CPO, but helping water ratepayers from COTREL all the way to Toowallton, to include those people in Portland, Sandy, Gresham, and other communities in between. The Portland Water Bureau has got an application, permit application in front of the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners at this time, which I have encouraged them to look at and deny. Again, this is a matter of bureaucrats as far away as Washington, D.C., dictating what's going to happen to the livelihoods, the homes, and the quality of life of people in this county. Again, www.cotrelcpo.com. Make a contribution, help them out. On the short-term rentals, people need to go to the Clackamas County website, look at the April 19th policy session, and you will hear the dialogue, the debate on that from that day, and you can also look at the draft regulation. Please look at that. If you have interest in short-term rentals, which I know many people in this county do, and be prepared to testify at the public hearings, dates to be announced, correct? Okay, good. And now, again, from East County, on the Bull Run Bridge, many of you have been aware of our bridge out that way that's well over 100 years old. On the safety engineering scale, between 100 and 0, that bridge is at a 2, is limited to 12 tons. And unfortunately for the residents of the Bull Run CPO in Clackamas County, that bridge is the only way to get from the Bull Run CPO across the river to Sandy without going all the way up north through Springdale and then coming back down through Troutdale and back down. So this bridge is very important to our residents of the Bull Run CPO. I'd like you to know that the Bull Run CPO's got a new chair, Janet Davis, and you can contact her at bullruncpo@yahoo.com. She would love to hear from you if you have questions and concerns about the Bull Run Bridge. And also, on the bridge, be prepared on 10 May at 10:30, right here, you can tune in and listen to a hearing on the bridge. And finally, I'd like to mention again, a thank you to Tess for coming in and talking about Home Share Oregon. It is, offers a potential for some of our residents who are in need of housing to find something that's affordable. And you can learn more about Home Share Oregon at homeshareorgan.org. And thank you, Clackamas County. Have a good spring day. Don't get a sunburn tomorrow. Get out your bikinis tomorrow because on Monday, it's going to be 60 degrees and rainy, and you'll be at Burlington Coat Factory getting a new coat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Next is Commissioner West.
Thank you. Had a great opportunity to go to the OCBA luncheon, where we learned more about the navigation center that is being proposed through private groups here in Oregon City to really help address the addiction, mental health, and the housing crisis here in Clackamas County. A lot of brilliant thought leaders, thoughtful outreach. As we look to partner with them to endeavor moving forward, it's a really exciting opportunity for Clackamas County. I think it really fits within a recovery model, which this board has stated is our goals when we, and the lens at which we want to make policy. So that was a blast. I want to thank, just another public acknowledgement of the big heart and amazing work of Dan Fowler, former mayor of Oregon City. He is doing great things and is a great asset to our is a great asset to our community. So that was a great time. Appreciated that opportunity to go to that luncheon and sit next to our lovely and esteemed chair. We had a good time. I also got a chance to tour MHC, our Urgent Care Behavioral Health Center. It's also housed within that center are the phone banks for somebody has a mental health crisis and needs immediate phone support or tele-support. We can provide that in a really meaningful and robust way in that portion of the MHC Urgent Care. After touring that and hanging out with the staff and seeing what they do, I also was a guest at the Mental Health and Addictions Council, which has been around since the '60s. It's actually required by statute for some of the federal funding. There's a lot of, one thing that I'm so impressed by that we do, and that's unique in Clackamas County, and we got to say the cool things that are unique about what we do, this is absolutely evidence-based and shows good outcomes, is we are heavy in peer support. People have lived experience coming in and providing peer support for those that are having very severe mental health issues or are potentially seeking treatment, or maybe they have some type of struggle with addiction. And that peer relationship and just having a conversation that's not even necessarily under the guise of therapy, right? But it's just talking to someone that can completely relate to you and that can hear you has been really essential. And we've been doing that for a while. It's an award-winning approach that we take. The other counties in this area don't, aren't utilizing that way of helping to treat people's mental health issues. This council has people with lived experience, too. And I love the way downstream preventative work they're doing. They're getting into our schools. There were three or four students from Westland High School. There's a huge Westland contingency on this council, which was, which was cool. But they had a huge, successful assembly, and they started to talk about the issue of fentanyl, Narcan in their schools, and conversations that none of us thought we'd have to have in our schools. But unfortunately, the reality is, we do. And they're doing this very important work early, early on to get ahead of this drug and addiction crisis that we're all facing. So it was an absolute honor to be a part of that. I will be attending that council again and hopefully working with them. So that was great. Now, I went to a very well-attended city council last night, and I was there until, I think, 10 o'clock. It was a long one in Malala. It was a big one. And it was a packed house. It was a full house. Chair was getting texts from me late night, "This is what's going on, Chair." But I spoke for about 40 minutes to their council about the resolution that we adopted. They are looking at also adopting it as a city resolution. Happy Valley, like I said, has already passed it. Marion County, it's on their docket to pass. This is our resolution on recovery-oriented systems of care. And Yanhill County is passing it on Fentanyl Awareness Day. So people are seeing our leadership and our value statements we're making, our belief statements, and they're picking up and wanting to partner with us. They were also talking about the warming shelter there that is run by Councilor Leota Childress. It's in threat. And I just think this board needs to be aware that that is in threat. They, and I think there are some valid concerns from the community that we don't see, but I saw some of them last night. As I was leaving late at night after the meeting, some guy struggling with mental illness screaming wild obscenities in a residential area, walking behind buildings, very suspicious. I mean, just at the top of his lung. I drive a block away to people that were digging through trash that were, I could clinically assess them as definitely altered by some substance. Out in Malala, Malala is really struggling. There is, we hear so much about the metro area, but uniquely, Malala needs some help. They are trying to figure out how to be compliant with Oregon statute that, with Boise v. Martin, with the whole public camping, and all these little cities are trying to deal with this. The city is losing its mind, rightfully so, and very, very upset and concerned. And they're talking about creating one of their parks into a homeless camp now in Malala, and the people are like, "Are you got to be kidding me?" And this little city has no resources, and they're busting at the seams in growth. And I think that there's a real issue bubbling up there that we want to be aware of. And I think they're, and so it was interesting to hear that perspective. And I can understand why when we have active legislation right now, HB 3501, that would basically remove all tamannar, time, and custom for cities or jurisdictions to deal with, and basically make it so permissive that, that people that are homeless can literally camp on any public space with no restrictions, and you can't do anything about it, and if you do, you'll be fined. It like takes it to a whole nother level. Now, I've done some investigation. I don't think that bill necessarily is going anywhere, thank God. But, but you can, you can see why people are just really upset and scared. So wanted to put that on everyone's radar about what's going on in Malala and how we can, maybe we need to talk about how we can be good partners with them. It's been a busy week. I look forward to next week, and that is all I have, Chair.
I just want to thank you. I want to follow up on the Malala Hope situation. I've been working with them probably since I became chair, and it is a building that is owned by the city of Malala, and it is renting it to the nonprofit that's established called Malala Hope, who is run by Leota Childress. And it is a warming and cooling shelter only. And there's a certain criteria that those kick in. If the temperature goes to 32 degrees, then they bring in people who obviously should not be outside, and I forget what the high temperature is, 95 or 8 or 98. So, and then the county will reimburse on a daily basis what that is. What has happened, I believe, out there, that more and more pressure is to be putting on this shelter that's established for only severe weather events to do all these other services in addition to, like provide clothing. It provides meals, which is fine. The community is very supportive of the meals. And then reaching out, trying to do all kinds of services because the need is so great. The trouble with Malala is the city limits are very small, and there's very few buildings available to do this. And we heard from the city leaders who came here and are applying to expand their urban growth boundaries, and rightfully so. They need to build out. They only have 65 acres left of industrial land in the city. So those are problems that are really endemic to Malala, which I think speaks to a larger problem with rural cities, not only in Clackamas County, but in Oregon as well. I believe this is a city of Malala-led event. However, if there's something that we can do to help them to mitigate the concerns, I do think we should try to help with that, as I have been in contact. The people do not want the tents, tent cities in their city parks. And that, I mean, I got calls on that. Holy cow. Can you blame them? No, you can't blame them. But this is, just says to, as we try to move forward on this problem, it's everywhere. And just for the public know, we had our planning meeting, excuse me for, okay, this board had a planning meeting yesterday. So what are we going to do now to help the homeless population dealing with how they became homeless? And we're going to focus on the mental health issue and drug addiction issue. And what all this sort of staff, and we have very good staff, came in and said, "Look, the problem has gone like this. It has skyrocketed. We're talking like a rocket to the moon. The problem has exploded so back here, and the government and our response is here because there's not enough services, there's not enough money, believe it or not, and we're trying to recruit therapists to give services to people because we need people helping people." But yet, the requirements to become a therapist in Oregon is you have to have a master's degree in psychology and 3,000 hours before you can even take the test to become a therapist. I says, "Oh, for crying out loud." Yeah, we're not going to get there. So I think that's a fix that needs to go to the legislature to reevaluate. Is it really necessary that you have a master's degree in some of this stuff to help people on their way to success? So that's one of my pet peeves. But thank you, Martha, for allowing me to say that.
[laughing]
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Anytime, anytime. No worries with me. I did want to mention Malala, too, though, because I did have a chance. I think I mentioned this once before. I did go to see their home forward building that they were doing out there. And it was interesting what you said, Ben, because that's exactly what the city manager said to me and the mayor and Leota and the other counselors that were there as we toured the area, that, yeah, they're having a real drug, serious drug issues out there. So you just reaffirmed what I was learning as they're building their affordable housing, you know, capacity. They are seeing some serious problems out there. And so, yeah.
Commissioner, last night, the crowd was basically testifying over and over again that they're asking the city to cancel the lease and to, you know, so there's real concerns that what little infrastructure they have would disappear. I don't know what the support measure is, but you are right on the nose with the pressure they're having, yeah.
They were really, they're really, it's really, and I don't think it's just probably Malala. You're probably seeing it out in Essaketa, and you're probably seeing it out in Canby and all the other. And there's that wonderful nonprofit in Canby that's been...
Canby Center.
Yeah, the Canby that, I know that Commissioner Scholl and I both visited that at one point as well. But I just wanted to say, yeah, I heard, heard the same thing. But I also want to build a little bit on what Gary talked about. Dani Stam, congratulations to her, and she's delightful, and so is her colleague and I think supervisor, Adam Freer. They came in yesterday, and they briefed my policy advisor, as well as Tracy, on what has been happening in early childcare, pre, you know, preschool. Because one of the things that we are finding out, that the data shows that in 2022, this is national, more than 75% of parents in the United States looking for childcare reported difficulty finding it. And I do think that's a huge issue. And I've been working with Dani and Adam Freer. I've been visiting sites, childcare sites throughout the county, oftentimes on, the two most intriguing were on business campuses, Daimler and Siemens. And so I'm trying to tease out why those, those companies, you know, what, what's their return on investment for actually having something like that, that increases productivity, gives parents a chance to feel that their children are safe and close. They'll oftentimes have lunch with their kids, and they are absolutely phenomenal programs. So I've been working with our workforce board, and that is Bridget Daisy, who's the executive director. And in the next few months, we're going to be pulling together a, a larger county conversation about what this means for our working families and what it means especially for our business community because they have difficulties getting and retaining workers, okay? Sometimes just because you got to juggle everything with having these kids. So there's going to be more to happen on that. We're identifying businesses. I am looking at it also from a business perspective, and I wanted to thank Cindy Moore, who is, works for our Economic Development Department. As we were talking about how we're going to pull the symposium together, again, really trying to get the business community, very similar to what Dan Fowler did, which is why they were so successful. You know, he got the Oregon City Business Alliance on board. He's got the CCBA. You get your thought leaders together in one room. And I think, I think there's going to be more to come on that. And I do participate in a program called Counties for Kids, and it's a leadership program for commissioners who are interested in working prenatal to three. And of course, not just prenatal to three, but we also need childcare up to, you know, 12, 13 years old, things of that sort. So we will also be including our school districts. The other thing the community college is doing in order to help with this effort is to have a new program that, and they also have childcare on their campus, that is actually an early childcare education program to encourage people to get into that field of, you know, being the people that will help take care of children. And I experienced this last week because I was visiting my daughter in Boston. She had a childcare crisis when I was there, so I had to help take care of that. I had to pick those kids up. I had to get them where they needed to be, and she was very grateful for my help. And I just wish I was a little closer some days because I could do that more frequently. But it is an issue, and we do have childcare deserts here, and I do think it's going to be an important piece of what we do with the input from our business community, as well as the community colleges and the providers of what everybody's needs are so we can solve this problem together as a community. So, or issue, or challenge. It's not really a problem, it's just a challenge. So that's what I've got for today. I am attending the Spirit Mountain Community Fund. I'm on the board. That is the nonprofit from Grand Ron. We're having a retreat today that I'm attempting to attend virtually. I'm going to actually try and attend tomorrow in person, so I probably will not be seeing you at the Volunteers in Medicine's event because I've got to go out and look at that.
Got it.
And the other, the important thing, though, with those folks is that we have been able to funnel, you know, significant dollars to our nonprofits, and a number of them in Canby, including Parent Credit, Clackamas Women's Services, the Service Center that they have for folks off on 82nd. Because as a board member, you know, we, they actually give us a chance to look at really good programs, and it gives me an opportunity to advocate, maybe get some more dollars in capacity to our local nonprofits with the work they do. So I'll be doing that virtually today, and I'll have more to tell you next week about the outcomes.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Schrader. Yeah, we all attended the same events together. We had, like we say, we all attended the luncheon of the Navigation Center. Tomorrow is the Volunteers in Medicine Luncheon, and they are constructing a new clinic at Clackamas Community College. They have raised a lot of money for that, and Clackamas County has been able to help with CBG grants for that at Claremont Hall on Beaver Creek roadside of Clackamas Community College. It's a wonderful partnership because the college also is an education mode for workplace development and medical programs, too. So we're looking at it because a lot of potential can be there. I'd like to shift our attention to tolling. You've never heard about that. Well, I have good news, as you may have seen in the newspaper. There was a bill dropped in the legislature, House Bill 3615, and that was a result of the work in part of what we're doing here at Clackamas County. We were able to send letters and letters and letters ad nauseam, and we sent a letter from Clackamas County and had most of the cities in Clackamas County join us in saying, "What you're doing isn't right. You're not addressing the many, many issues like the economic hardship that will place, diversion into our side streets, and the overall lack of investment in listening to the public." So this bill was dropped. What it will do, it will delay tolling for two years, set up a task force, and they have outlined who's going to be on the task force to develop ideas. But ironically, the task force part of that ends in December of 2027. So that surprised me, although this bill just goes to '26, this goes to '27. And so we're quite hopeful that something will be done on that. The Clackamas County Caucus is in part, or mostly responsible for that bill. They initially had 16 cosponsors. They now have 22 cosponsors, and I understand 26 possibly would be signing on to that. So, and they're reaching out to the cities in Clackamas County to ask their representatives if they would please do that. So that is a positive step. And of course, my big next question on that, what does the governor think? Because she will have to sign this. And as you remember, the governor spearheaded the other two polling bills, tolling bills, when she was Speaker of the House. So we'll see how that plays out. But I hope that they take some time and try, if they are going to toll this, which I don't like, don't think I'm supporting tolling, I'm not. But they need to do it in a more judicious, economically feasible way. That's all I have today, commissioners. Thank you for a very good meeting. See no for the business before the Board of County Commissioners. We are adjourned.